Perhaps even set those dates a year in advance so that they can be scheduled.
Yeah, I might put that it seems to me that there is perhaps an increasing need for that communication as we're working through the Common Core standards, particularly the changes in the math standards as the high school district is trying to figure out how they want to implement them. That's going to affect us.
So just for you to know, administration wise, we're in regular communication, not just us and the high school district, but the other feeder districts as well. Ms. McCulick and I probably each have two days each on our calendar where we're coordinating with our other partner districts on this, so.
Yeah, I was gonna actually mention that as well on a board level that, I know I'm in contact with a lot of those key players, and then as a substitute teacher in the high school district and in the Pacifica School District, I have a lot of communication as well without having this committee.
So if there's an opportunity for things to occur at the board level, then that's what we would meet around. It's not about management of details, it's about, you know, what are the big picture areas for partnership?
Not really interested in this one.
You would be interested?
No.
No, you would, because you're already.
Well, because he's an employee there too.
Oh, that's true, that could be a little awkward.
Too much, overkill.
Would you be interested?
No, I'm interested in the next one.
You can serve on more than one.
But I don't want it to be that I can't serve on the next one if I say yes to the one. I don't mind serving on both, but I don't want it to be that. I wouldn't be.
Well, I think we'd be considering each one independent of what the previous ones, other than not having somebody serve on too many of them, because that's both putting a little too much on one person in terms of power and also responsibility, asking a lot of somebody.
I'll, um.
Would you be willing to serve on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it our bylaw that says we put two people on that committee?
Well, I'll nominate Marie.
Usually it's a two-by-two committee, so there's two, two, two of each board.
I'll nominate Marie.
No, I, he just wanted to be on.
Well, but we need two.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say.
That's why we're trying to be so persuasive about this.
I'm gonna, I just want you to know, I don't mind if I serve on more than one committee, but the committee that I would really like to serve on is the City of Daly City Committee. So I would hate to say yes to high school and not be able to serve on the next one.
It would, you know, like I said, that wouldn't be a, that wouldn't be a preventer for that.
Okay.
So if you're willing to.
I think the team needs me here.
But I wanna make sure, I wanna get on that one, because I really think that we have not done what we can, especially now if we're gonna be doing this other stuff.
Okay, so we do have two nominations, nominations for Mr. Waters and Ms. Brizuela to serve on the high school and other local school committee, and I will second that motion. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was also passed unanimously. Okay.
So now the City of Daly.
The City of Daly City.
And Colma.
And Colma.
Thank you, thank you.
Don't wanna leave out Colma.
Thank you for saying Colma. I'd really like to serve on that committee.
So the, the purpose of this is also to meet on issues that involve on board and council level considerations. In the last couple of years, it's been around, you know, the development of Christopher Columbus and some of the issues that were arising there, and that, that's been the focus of it. This request for meetings have always been initiated by our district. We've never had, we've never been initiated with. It's always us initiating. There will be opportunities probably in the next year to work through some potential issues with the TRP modernization. They've already started meeting. It doesn't seem to involve much, you know, the planning departments is very cooperative with some stop signs and things like that that we wanted to include, but it, it's board and council level issues that, that are addressed.
And also they discussed about departmentary contracts, which I happened to be on the board at that time, which is why we developed it, so I would like to see it continue. So please, I don't wanna nominate myself. Somebody wanna nominate me? No? I'll nominate myself then.
Okay. I would also like to nominate Mr. Ali.
Okay, we can work together.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Douglas.
Oh, man, but it's not a conflict if you're working for the city.
Not so far as I know. I suppose that would be a question for, for.
No, I, you know what I mean. You know exactly what I mean. It's not like, may not be a.
Not a commission.
It's not a condition, but it.
So this is not a commission or a city, uh, it's not.
I would say the only potential conflict would be if I'm willing to put myself at risk, if we as a district and a board were to make the city upset with us and with, with me, and I think that that might not really matter whether I'm on the committee or not. It's being on the board. So far, been through four and a half years on the board without having a problem that way.
We haven't met with them.
So for, for clarity's sake, we have three nominations, and we have seconds for none. So if.
Then Rebecca, you wanna be on the committee really bad?
Well, actually, I do.
Then what, then can we both be on the committee together? Because I can bring so much more to the table of my longevity here, and, and you can bring what you can to the table as well. Can we work together on this, you and I? I think we can.
Not a question.
And I'm not saying you wouldn't be good. I would serve with you.
Where is, just, just as a team, where would the need be? Because I'm actually interested in that committee also. However, I know the team needs me at the high school in wellness, so really looking at all of our talents and where would, where would the team need us?
Sorry, I'm not, I don't think I would, it was.
I'm wondering where, as a board, where do, where would our talents best fit?
Oh.
So I know, I know you have a lot of.
Community and.
So have a lot of influence with the community.
And before, and history.
I'm just looking at parental involvement. You, you have a lot of skills that I don't as far as getting people involved. Yeah, just, just example, I was looking at what you did with, um, this past Saturday.
But I, I do that through PTA as well, so same thing. I do it with PTA.
That is why it's a great fit.
I would, I would like to nominate you for that. As a matter of fact, I wanna talk to you about, um, PTA. I have some questions.
Okay.
But.
That's something else.
At the moment, we do have, you know, three, three possible nomin, well, let's, let's deal with, I think we need to deal with, we have, we have some nominations on the board for the city one, which are waiting for a second. Is, is there, you know, I am, you know, if nobody else, I will second myself and Mr. Ali for that.
It's really a shame, because if, if the mayor would've been here tonight, he would've mentioned how much he was looking forward to working with me, but that's fine, that's all right.
Did you said these committees don't meet anyway?
No, that, they, they will meet, they will meet.
You can still work with the mayor even without a committee?
They will, they, they're supposed to meet, but they didn't meet.
All right.
Okay?
So we do have.
And neither did the high school district meet.
Right.
And I asked several times about it. I asked several times about it.
So we do have a nomination and a second, so those in favor of myself and Mr. Ali for the City of Daly City.
What happened to the first motion?
Well, I seconded two of them.
It hasn't died yet.
Okay, is there a second then?
Is there a second for the first motion?
There wasn't.
Well, I, I, no one asked for it, but is there, there's not a second? Okay. So it's obvious that, once again, that my colleagues on it feel that I'm worthy to be on that committee.
Let's try and keep this professional.
It is professional.
Okay, so could I have a vote for Mr. Ali or myself for City of Daly City Committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, so we have Mr. Waters, Mr. Ali, and myself voting aye, Ms. Brizuela voting no. Okay, that brings us, the last one on the list here, the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee. Do we have any volunteers to serve on that? Are you willing to continue serving there?
Well, I would never say no, but I'm very disappointed with how this board voted this evening. Very disappointed.
You have to respect the vote of any vote. Can I nominate Ms. Brizuela for the PIAC?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So I heard.
It's not about, it's not about respect.
I'm sorry, excuse me, we're in the middle.
When this continually happens.
Ms. Cooper, could we have a, um, roll call on that? I couldn't tell.
It's not funny. It's not funny.
This is for the PIAC, right?
For the PIAC Committee.
Okay, Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye, okay, so we do have, so we do finally, after many efforts, have our district subcommittees. And that brings us to the curriculum instruction and item one, the acceptance of donations in the absence of Mr. O'Teidy. Would anybody like to read the list and offer our donors thanks worship?
I'll go ahead and.
Go for it.
Make a motion that we accept the following donations, $700, actually, I don't have to say the amount. Community initiatives, Carmelita De La Cruz, Tessie Opilas Cruz, Maria E. Hernandez, Rosario Valiente, Alejandra Martinez, Marie Miranda, Hilda A. Donaire, Heidi Jafala, and Eric Taylor, and that's it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a question. Are these names of parents or students?
These are parent names.
Parent names, okay.
Okay, well, we have motion and second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposition, and accepting those with thanks. Okay, item two, Local Control Accountability Plan Progress Update Number Two. And I see Ms. McCulick and Ms. Kessler are ready to lay it on us.
Yes, this is obviously a joint effort with all of the departments, and as you know, we have been meeting with different stakeholders. We're getting closer to collecting most of the input. Right now, all the school sites are meeting with their site-specific stakeholders. I'm collecting that information to help us draft our LCAP, and we're receiving a lot, I've been to a lot of meetings. We're getting a lot of general consensus on some major actions that we'll share with you a little bit later, and so we just kinda wanted to give you an update on our progress and where we are and what we're kind of thinking and what we're hearing, so.
It's been a real pleasure to be working with Sandy and all the meetings that we have gone to. So what I'm gonna do is obviously go over more of the financial aspects, and Sandy's gonna go over more of the curriculum instruction aspects. And because the LCAP is funded by the LCFF, I thought it important to show you where we are and where we're going financially with the LCFF that will be supporting that LCAP. So for this current year, 1314, the target, if we were to get the 100% funding that we're, we're looking forward to getting eventually, we would be getting $56.8 million in total, and you see the breakdown between the bake, the base grant and the supplemental and concentration grant. So that is the target as of 1314, and then below that is what we're, we're actually getting this year. So obviously, there's quite a gap between the $56.8 million and the $39.3 million. That's that gap that they are funding throughout the following eight years, including this year. So the next slide will show, now, this one shows us this estimate for the 1415 year. So that estimated target does move as well, because it gets moved up with the COLA, and, and so where we were $56.8 million, we're now $57.3 million for next year. That's, that will be our target. As you can see at the bottom there.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's, that's okay.
Trigger happy.
Right, right here, it's, it's a .85% increase, because a COLA is quite low for the next year, and so that would be the new target, and the, what we expect in the funding of that target is 28.05% funding of the gap between the target and what we were getting this year. By funding that gap, it's actually an increase for us for just, by just under 13%, because it's 28% funding of the gap, not 28% additional funding. So that would bring us up from the previous year, from this current year of $39.3 million to $44.3 million. So that, that would be our increase there. So, right now, we're getting, okay, if we went back, let's see here. If you see the base grant for next year, we're expecting to be $36.6 million. That's the amount we expect to get next year for the base grant. So on this slide here, we're gonna talk about how we would be spending that base grant. The current year, and by the way, that additional amount is 3.7 million of additional funding over this year for the great base grant portion. And what we're funding this year currently with that are basic education and operational services. The proposed LCAP funding for next year for additional services, Sandy will talk to.
So, and this is just based on the general consensus we've been hearing so far. We've met with parents, with teachers, with classified. We've met with a lot of stakeholders, but we're still waiting to hear from site-specific. But right now, what we're hearing in general consensus is restoring the custodians. You know, we had some lean times, and so bringing back some positions from, that were cut. And then also library assistants, restoring those. We're looking at also adding new positions. We've been, you know, we're getting ready for the Common Core with all the technology needs. The librarians are going to play a key role in that, and so having a librarian at every middle school, that's been something we keep hearing over and over. Now, remember, these are just proposed, these are just ideas that we just keep hearing, and we wanted you to hear what has been kind of a consensus. We've had a committee of teachers, parent, a parent representative, classified representative administration called the Common Core Implementation Advisory Committee. It's to get us ready for the technology of the Common Core. I'll be sharing a recommendation at the next board meeting, but something that's come out of that is having a teacher that can help our teachers with the technology integration, how to integrate it in the curriculum, and then also, we're gonna need more tech support, because we're gonna need more computers, and then we're going to need to have computers over time, so, you know, they only have a certain shelf life, and so we need to think about, we're gonna have to replace them, so having a reserve. And then local control funding formula, the essence of it is local control, so we need to make sure the schools have local control of some of the funds, and so having an increase of funding to the school sites for the base grant, for the, the general population of students.
So the, the additional activities that Sandy's just, Ms. McCulick has just described would cost us approximately $1.4 million. So, and as you see, we are bringing in 3.7 million more in the base grant, and 1.4 million would be the additional cost that we have for these programs. So then we move on to the supplemental grant, and the 1415 funding that we expect for the supplemental grant is $7.7 million. That is $1.3 million more than we're getting this year.
So currently, what we're spending is some of our teacher time. We're spending money on, this is for English learners, low-income students and foster youth. That's what supplemental and concentration grant funding is targeted for, and so we have English language development time during the day, 45 minutes, plus universal access, which is that differentiated instruction, working with small groups of students. So that's 19% of the elementary teacher's day, and so that's an expense that could be charged towards this grant. EIA, the Economic Impact Aid Services, those are all the funds that we use, the school sites receive for English learners. We focus on English learners, and so every school site had different activities of, to support their English learners based on their needs. Counselors were funded, can, are funded, can be funded out of supplemental concentration, our English learner office, the coaches, yeah.
Can I ask you about the counselors?
Sure.
Are we planning on beefing up any funding towards the counselors?
You're getting ahead of my slides.
All right.
This is current. This is current. So we're, we're funding 1.5 counselors, full-time equivalent counselors right now. We're funding our coaches, our math and English language arts department, and as you heard last board meeting and even today, Ms. Brizuela mentioned a lot of professional development, getting ready for the Common Core, so this is really supporting our students in need. We have a lot of English learner support in the professional development. RSP is Resource Specialist, so that's special education, our nurses, psychologists, attention to attendance, that is the attendance monitoring that was approved a while ago, and that helps us monitor our chronic absences and help support our students with regular attendance. And so that's what we're already spending, and that is, we still have more.
Yes.
So continued on.
Right, exactly.
We're proposed, so that's what we currently, it was a lot on that slide, so we had to break it into two slides. This is what we keep hearing, what people are looking for. The no child left behind, the federal dollars. We have been supporting our students, but the federal dollars have been cut, and so we have been kind of living off the carryover, which basically ends, so we're not gonna have any more carryover, so we're gonna have to, we don't wanna cut those programs that have been successful, that we've been funding out of federal dollars, and so now we're gonna supplement it, we're proposing to supplement those with the supplemental and concentration grant. We're also, this is, everyone keeps mentioning counselors, and so having a full-time counselor at every middle school, and since we have a halftime at every middle school, having a full-time funded by the supplemental concentration. And then this next one, Student Support Services Coordinator, this is really kind of the mental health piece. A lot of people, a lot of stakeholders are saying, we need support, behavior support, mental health, emotional support for our students that are not in special ed, and so that's what we're looking for here, is a person that can be kind of the, give direction to school sites, help with the leadership of what to do, and give ideas for how to support these students, and be that kind of liaison for supporting.
0.5.
Halftime person.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just, just a halftime person for the whole district?
Right.
Eee.
Well, they wouldn't be necessarily working directly with students, they would be more of the support of giving ideas. And over, and helping the counselors and working with this, but yeah.
They can do it.
But this is just a proposed, what we've been hearing, and these are just big picture. And then this, an additional unduplicated pupil count site support, because basically, I'm hearing different sites have different needs. Some sites, you know, want one thing, one, you know, so we don't wanna say everyone has to have the same thing, because everyone has different needs, so giving the school sites specific funding, which we'll get to in the next slide.
Okay, so these additional services that Sandy just went over, we believe that would be an estimated cost of $3 million. Now, you see that in the supplemental grant portion, we're only gonna get 1.3 million for this next year, and this is costing 3 million. However, if you go back and you do the math on the target that's coming up, the target, the unfunded portion of the supplemental concentration grant target is $3.3 million. The difference between what we, the cost here and what we're getting here is approximately 1.7, 1.7 million dollars, what, which would be fully funded with the, once we get to the targeted, funded target in future years. Until then, we are recommending that, should we decide to go through with this, that we use district reserves until that supplemental target gets funded.
How long would that be?
Well, it, it, some of it will be funded in the next couple of years. And I will show you on the interim report that we are actually recognizing it in the multi-year projection at a considerably lower rate than the state believes we'll be getting it, conservative rate. Of course, it could take many years, but we do feel that we have the ability to fund it, and you will see that in the multi-year projection. We do have the ability to fund it until that happens.
Would you fund it as a one-time fund, or we would be improving it every year?
Well, we would fund it on a yearly basis, hoping that we continue to get funds for, for the target, for the concentration and supplemental grants. However, if the state took a nosedive, just as they did many years ago, we would have to address it at that time. We do not, we do feel that this is the time to move forward with these ideas and to work with it later on if it doesn't come to fruition.
So you would make a yearly recommendation?
That is correct, but the amount will get smaller and smaller.
With the budget every year anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just, when I hear reserves.
Well, as you know, we built reserves, and we built reserves to cover us through hard times. It covered us through hard times, and because we were expecting even harder times, we pulled back more, and we were able to actually build those reserves even more instead of losing them. So this would be the opportunity to be able to spend some reserves on things that will eventually be kind of one-time. They'll be one-time for a few years at a diminishing rate, but we can see the, the future that we will be able to have separate funding for that, and we will be able to cover that until then.
All right.
So on this slide, back here, of that three point, that 3 million dollars extra, the biggest portion comes from this additional support for the unduplicated count, and that's right here. It becomes 2.4 million. This is the easy way of taking it back in the future if we needed to.
All right.
Don't think we're gonna need to do that, but I'll let Sandy speak to what these funds are for.
So like I said, the local control funding formula, want, we want local control. We want school sites, they know their students best, they know the needs of their students, so that they could have the funding to determine what would be the most appropriate staff, actions, et cetera, for their staff, for their students. So what we're proposing is $513 per unduplicated pupil, so if they, supplemental remembers English learner, low-income foster youth, so you can't, if they're all three, you can't count them three times, so you only count them once. And so what it would be for, we, with guidance, is that it would have to be to build their response intervention programs, strengthening whatever they have, you know, supporting their students, maybe it's adding a staff member to help support their students, whatever the school site decides. It could be for site-based counseling. It could be for any other support that the schools feel would help improve services for those students. And then, of course, parent engagement activities, so having funds to put towards, you know, any kind of parent nights and, and things like that. So that's what we are proposing, and so what we're asking, because in writing the LCAP, we need to also have a budget attached with it, and so we need to hear from school sites what they need to kind of put into the budget, but we wanna hear from the board kind of direction, you know, do you agree with this allocation to the school sites so that we can let the school sites know, so they can start thinking and engaging their stakeholders in what they feel they need, because there will be a short window of time, and we don't wanna make a robust decision, so we wanna kind of give them some direction now that you will be receiving, you know, about this amount of money, you know, what, what do you feel would be the most beneficial for your students towards response intervention, counseling, et cetera, for your English learners and low-income. And so just to kind of give you a little timeline, if we can get direction from you tonight, and then you're going to be adopting or asked to adopt the LCAP in June, at the end of June, but we are gonna have a process in between, and so these are all those stakeholder meeting dates that you've seen before. There have been some tweaks. We have a draft that will be written over the spring break, and then two committees are required to approve it, or to accept it, review it, is the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee and the District English Language Advisory Committee. Those are two required, but we will be sharing it with others. We're gonna have a, a review on April 17th with kind of school site council representatives from every school site, and then we're gonna bring you a draft in May, May 14th, so that you can take a look at it, and then there will be a public hearing in June, on June 11th, and then it has to be adopted before June 30th, so that would be the June 25th board meeting. One thing that I, Julie, Ms. Kessler and I went to a LCAP meeting on Monday at the county, and the county is the one who will be approving our plan once it's approved by the board, and they have said, no more than 10 pages. This is big picture. This is a story of your district. The details come in the budget, so all of the actions, the, that's where you'll see it in the budget. So you're going to see the plan is going to be big picture story of our district, and then the budget will have all details. So do you have any questions, and then we're gonna ask for direction once?
Oh, I'm sorry. A question about, you mentioned that we need computers coming up. Now, I asked before.
Now, I asked before if we had a grant writer, you said we have a grant writer. My question is, what kind of grants and funding is our grant writer currently working on? And are there any grants that are available to provide computers, iPad, et cetera, that our grant writer may know of?
We haven't been as successful at the district level to procuring funds from grants for technology. Some of our school sites have been more successful at doing so. Ms. Kloseman has done that with some organizations and getting technology. What we do have are the Common Core implementation funds that the state has provided us, and so the big chunk of the technology initial purchases will come from that grant, in a sense, from the state, to, to fund for that. And then we, we need to take responsibility to replace those as, as time goes on. And that's been the biggest obstacle for our district certainly, and districts across the state, is that we might get a grant to fund a purchase, but no one takes responsibility for replacement. And so we're recognizing that it's our responsibility, we're going to buy them, and we're going to replace them, and we need to do that with our existing funds, and we need to do a little bit every year, versus every five years, 100%. So we're going to do 20%, 20%, 20%, and then, you know, so we're planning, we're planning for that expense.
And that is included in this whole presentation?
Are we going to be using iPads as for education, or are we going to-
So, at the next board meeting, I'm actually going to be coming to you with a recommendation from our committee that we had established, and, and how to use those implementation funds from the state, the one-time funds, and, because it needs board approval in order to expend those funds. So, that will be at the next board meeting. So you'll hear more detail.
Appreciate it.
So, are we talking about just the existing computers we have already, or are we talking about everybody getting one?
We're going to have to, I mean, because of the requirements of the smarter balance, we need newer computers.
Yeah, but is everybody going to get one, or is it going to still be the lab they have to go with?
It's not going to be a one-to-one situation, not one computer for every student. We are going to bring down the ratio, and we'll learn about that later, but it's going to get down much lower than we've ever had it in this district.
Okay. Because that's kind of the problem, they're going to be taking the exams on the computer?
But they can rotate through, and that's what we're going to-
Yeah.
-practice with the field test, which is coming up in a couple weeks.
I don't know what you're saying, though, rotating, it could be an issue.
It's not going to, it's not a perfect plan, we may have to do that, but it's not a perfect plan.
Right, right.
Because it's bad enough when children take an exam, they're already nervous, because "Oh my god, it's exam, exam, exam," and now they're going to have to deal with the computer, they may not be as focused with it as they could be. Some kids have, are great at, but some kids don't have that much attention to it. So we want them to be successful in the exam.
So I'll go into more detail at the next board meeting.
Thank you, so I don't have to worry every night.
I have a couple quick, simple questions. So the 2.4 million dollars, is every single school going to get that exact same amount?
No.
Because I know it says proposed based on-
That's the grand total.
It's, that's the total, the 2.4 million.
That's what's going to be split amongst all-
Yeah.
At 513, 513 dollars per undup, unduplicated count student that they have.
All right, and then, would that be including the money from the reserves that you mentioned?
If we can go back a couple slides here. That was for the positions, I think, wasn't it?
I don't know, I just don't know.
Okay, so this, this slide here, where we talked about the total cost being 3 million dollars, that 2.4 million is right in this line right here, and so the 1.3 million will start to pay for the 3 million, and then there'll be a 17, 1.7 million dollar amount that would be supported by the reserves for a period of time.
So that's what we're appro, we would be approving to dip 1.7 million?
Right now, only, giving us direction only for this 2.4 million.
Oh, all right.
So, Ms. Rely, let me help you understand a little bit, because I know that we've had this conversation many times before, and why, and why is our recommendation changing? So, in the past, I have never been able to recommend use of the reserves for any short-term funding, just because we didn't know the funding outlook. It was not known. We could hope, we could pray, we would say, "Maybe," but there is no plan for any kind of increased funding. At this point in time, we do have a funding outlook, and a fund, and the outlook shows that we will be gaining funds. And so, our recommendation, the administration's recommendation is to utilize some of our reserves for a short-term basis, because we know that there's a plan for increased funding. It's not a hope, well, it continues to be a hope, because there's always hope, but it, it's, it's beyond hope. There's a plan, the economy is on the upswing, we know that we can count on it at least another year, because this year is much stronger than they expected it to be. So, we, we know that that will be funded within a short time. We do have, what some might say is, is a, is a very large reserve, much more than, than we would need, and, and that's why our recommendation is, let's just use a little bit of it, it'll come, it'll take care of itself in a couple of years, there's a plan for it to take care of itself. If that changes, we, we, you know, not only with this, this additional funds, but everything that we're doing has to become, has to be reexamined again.
That's a good point.
So.
And also, in the next presentation of the interim report, I will be able to show you on the multi-year projection, and I think that you will feel comfortable.
All right. Yeah, that's true. No, that was it, two questions, that's it.
So we do ask that tonight, that you would provide us direction. It could, and it'd be nice for it to be through a vote, for us to be able to let school sites know that they can count on these 513 dollars per unduplicated student, and we would work that out for each school, what it would mean for them, so that they can start the planning process, and then we can include those activities into our LCAP in June.
In the interest of time, I would like to make a motion that we approve the 513 dollars per unduplicated pupil to each site, school site, to be used for those services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Waters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That was unanimous.
So, does that, oh, that's all the other stuff.
So all of the other activities will be included in the LCAP approval, but we don't need direction at this point for that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, the only thing we approve is just the money for the local-
For the school sites, so they can plan and get a, get the, get their activities to us to include in the, in the plan.
And so, we're going to do this later then, or is this going to be part of what them?
No, that's, that's a district, and that will come, and that will continue to be included, as well as other activities that have surfaced.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
And now they leave us.
Is that per student?
You get it per unduplicated student, you'll find, you'll find out on Monday exactly what that means.
Your math correction.
Okay. Right.
I think it could happen in five or 10 minutes, so.
I believe if I'm not missing anything, I could put my glasses on and be sure, that the only other thing on the regular agenda after the interim budget review is the board policies one, so we will be able to, yeah, we will be able to table that.
Okay.
That was kind of what I was expecting.
Wonderful.
Carry on, Ms. Kessler. Oh, I should, I suppose introduce it, this is item four, the fiscal year 2013-14, second interim budget review, and I'm turning it over to Ms. Kessler.
All right, you've been through this before, but Mr. Waters has not, so, and I review it each time. So, we're doing the second interim report right now. School boards are required to certify the current year and the following two subsequent year financial condition of the district, that we will be able to meet our financial needs. Those are called the interim reports, the first interim report is a snapshot in time as of, and for this year, October 31st, 2013, it's always October 31st, for whatever year it is. The second interim report is a snapshot as of January 31st of any given year, and of course, this is of 2014 here. So, right now, this is the second interim report, we've already done the first interim, and the second interim report includes a multi-year projection for the two out-years, 14-15 and 15-16. In this presentation, the 16-17 year is included, but it is not a part of the official interim report. So the first thing I want to do here is I want to go over the changes in revenues, unrestricted revenues, since the first interim. We have a total change of an additional 150,000 dollars, additional revenues since the first interim. And the majority, as you can see, it comes from the revenue limit, federal programs, and a reduction in contributions. Together, those make an additional revenues for us, and I'll go a little bit over why that is in a couple of slides. Also, there is a change in expenditures since the first interim report, and you can see these bar graphs, the yellow is the first interim, and the, the blue is the second. There's nothing here that has really huge changes, this is, this is large, but all the rest is very small, and you can see over here, the only large thing is this services expenditures, and I will be going over that in the next slide. But the total is, we have additional expenditures of 743,000 dollars since the first interim. So in explaining that, first I want to go over the explanation for the change in additional revenues. We have a reduction in revenues, because we have 4.3 ADA less than what we planned on in the first interim. And also, our unduplicated count, which last year, when we built the budget, we estimated it to be 77.4%. We had no software system that gave us that information, and so we had to get, use the best information we could.
Count things.
Yes, literally trying to count things. So-
MAA?
I'm sorry?
MAA?
I'm sorry.
What is MAA?
Oh, I'm not there yet. So, our unduplicated count, now we actually have it, because it's at the seabeds time, the October period, is 73.7%. So it's a little bit lower than what we originally estimated, that causes our LCFF revenues to go down. Next is the federal revenues, ma. So this is for our medical administrative assistance revenues. We get reimbursed for activities that our employees do that are reimbursable through this federal program, and the feds have reduced our ability to request reimbursements. So, a lot of our regular teachers who were able to request reimbursements on behalf of their time spent for the district, and of course, the money would come to the district, are no longer allowed to do that. So we had to adjust the budget downward to reflect the fact that we won't be getting as much reimbursement as we expected. So that reduces those revenues there. But we're still doing the job. I'm sorry? We're still doing the work, just not getting reimbursed. Right, right. And then, if you went back to this previous slide, you'll see the, the biggest change in revenues is a reduction in contributions. Reduction in contributions to unrestricted programs is like an increase to revenues for us, because that ends up being a negative revenue. So, the reduction to contributions here, the majority of it is a decrease in our contribution to home-to-school transportation. Now, don't get all excited about it, the reason why is because those funds used to go into restricted, and the expenditures used to come out of restricted. Now, because it's folded into the LCFF funding, it's no longer in the restricted category, it's in the unrestricted. So we receive the monies in unrestricted, but we also have that, that huge increase of expenditures that you saw, is in unrestricted as well. So, the revenues are coming up, because the money is coming into the general fund unrestricted, and the expenditures are going up as well, because now we have to spend those monies from the unrestricted. So that's, it's not really a, a big change, it looks like a huge change, it's just moving at it from one place into another, both revenues and expenditures. There's a slight increase in special ed funding, that changes regularly, and the expenditures, the changes in expenditures for salaries and benefits, basically, it's, we had in the budget, a budget for a, the BITSA program management support. So we had a person that we were going to have to support our BITSA program, to manage that BITSA program. We are no longer doing that, we've given it to the county to do instead, so right down here, that, that expense went down and this one went up. So instead of doing it in-house, the county office of ed runs a BITSA program for us.
What is BITSA again?
Beginning Teacher Support and Assessment. So, as you can see, for the most part, the expenditures, the revenues and expend, the big changes, were really going from restricted to unrestricted, from in-house to county, and the only real changes were the federal revenues and a slight drop in our unduplicated count. All right, so, at first interim, we expected our end fund balance at the end of this year to be 19 million dollars. With additional revenues of 150,000, and additional expenditures of 744,000, that has dropped slightly to 18.8 million dollars that we expect to have in our end fund balance as unrestricted. Those are then earmarked, basically. This is just a small amount for our prepaid expenditures and, and our revolving cash, that's cash on hand at school sites, small amount there. We have a 5% reserve for economic uncertainty, we're required to have three by law, we have five. We have some funds still put aside for the math program, that each year we've been using 200,000 dollars, and so we have one year left of that, 200,000 dollars. And then we have, for textbook purchases, we've got 846,000 dollars put aside. So after we remove these amounts of this balance here, that are earmarked for specific purposes, or this one, which is just economic uncertainty, we have 15 million dollars that is in our, our end fund balance. So, now we're going to go on to our multi-year projection, and what's important in a multi-year projection is, you know, what were our assumptions that we had when we built the multi-year projections? Because if we don't have that, we can say, we can add a whole bunch of revenues and reduce the expenditures, and it's not meaningful at all. So, in the multi-year projection, we have these different calls for 14-15, 15-16, and 16-17. We have increased the revenues by these COLA amounts in the target, in the target. So, that doesn't mean we're getting all of that, as you know, you saw, it will increase the target. However, we will be getting some of the funding of the target. So for the 14-15 year, we expect that 28.05%. That was on that last presentation as well, it ended up being almost a 13% increase for us, because it's the funding of the target. In the out-years, we're expecting, we're putting into the multi-year projection, 7.8 and 8.4%. These are extremely conservative, you'll see them later on, but, so that you know it's very conservative, what works, what we've got in the multi-year projection for the out-year funding of the gap. So we also expect any other state programs to be flat. In the budget, again, it's conservative, in the current year, we have a, a 5.2% cut for federal programs, and that's one of those reasons why we need to support it in the following years. And in the following years, we have an 8.2% cut, and this is because of federal sequestration, which is looking like, we're likely to have, to get most of that money back. So it looks like it's going to be really less than 2%, but we will just build the budget accordingly, when we know what it is. But right now, the budget is a little bit more conservative, because we've got that in the out-years, just in the multi-year, because we've got an 8.2% cut for the federal. in the out-years, just in the multi-year, because we've got an 8.2% cut for the federal. We expect the ADA to be static, just instead of planning on it going up, we budget it on being static. We've been going up over the past years. It's hard to say whether we've leveled out or not, but we just are going to have that flat. And our unduplicated count, we figure our 73.7% that we have now is really our best estimate for the out-years as well. So that's static as well, that's for our free and reduce, English learners and foster youth. And next year, we might want to do that campaign that we did this year again, because I do believe that we get the people to sign up for the free and reduced, and we capture the extra families that may not have done it at that time, and then they end up being in our account that we get funded on. And step and column is included. So here is what our multi-year projection looks like, the first column being the year that we are actually in, and then the three following years. You see the COLAs in each of these, and all of those assumptions that I was talking about are in each of these. I'd like to point out this line here, it's a very important line. This is the line that shows that we have an increase to fund balance with the status quo of what we have now. This is what, you'll see later on, this is not including LCAP, okay? But you'll see that. So in the current year, we expect to have a positive addition to our fund balance of $141,000. But then, because we're getting that 28% increase in funding, which is $5 million, between the base, which is $3.7 million, and the concentrate, supplemental concentration, another $1.3 million, it's $5 million extra dollars that we're going to be getting, and that is likely to happen in this next year. So if you look, this is what we're going to be adding, adding to the already large fund balance, 4.6 million. And the following year, 5.4 million, when you round it, and the following year, 6.2 million. That's going to be adding, if we did nothing to increase with the LCAP, this is what we would be adding. This is what, where our fund balance would be going, from 18.5 million to 19, to 23.5, to almost $29 million if we were to do nothing. But we're not planning on that, are we? Here's our fund balance on a graph. You see it going up. Makes you feel good.